or silence them, and candidates as well, so we aren't interrupted by amusing ringtones during the forum. Okay, everybody's set? Welcome to the Spring 2024 Manona City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by Manona Community Media. I'm Joy Cardine from the League of Women Voters of Dane County, and I'll be your moderator today. The April 2 election includes a race for Manona alderpersons. There are three open seats, and voters can choose three candidates from the six candidates that are on the ballot. We have five of the candidates with us today. Patrick DePula, Jerry Thompson, Teresa Radermacher, Rachel Kugel, and Brian Holmquist. Candace Verberg had agreed to attend but called today to say she was unable to. The candidates will answer questions that were prepared by Manona Community Media that include questions that were submitted online by voters ahead of time. We are not taking questions live from our audience onsite or anybody online. We are going to be rotating which candidates will answer a question first and last, and the order of opening statements was randomly selected before the forum. I'm also going to go over the rules and format, thanks to the candidates for agreeing to following these rules. Each candidate will have a minute thirty for opening statements, and each candidate will receive a minute thirty to answer every question. You will also have a minute thirty for closing remarks. We will continue to ask questions until we run out of time or we run out of questions. Please only respond to the questions being asked. Do not reference other candidates in your answers, and please, no personal attacks. Do follow the minute thirty time limit for your answers. You can see the time being kept on the screens on the side of the room. When your time is up, please finish your thought. Your microphone will be muted if you abuse the time limits. Residents can view this forum on the Manona Community Media YouTube channel. And please, for our audience, don't clap or cheer or boo or jeer while candidates are answering questions. But you know what? Let's welcome our candidates for being here. All right, we'll start with opening statements, and we will start with Patrick DePula.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Patrick DePula. I'm a current city of Manona alderperson, finishing up my first two-year term on council. I'm a parent. Both of my children go to Manona Grove School District. One is twelve and one is, well, just about to get his driver's license in two weeks, which has given me a great amount of stress. That's actually all I'm thinking about today. No, anyway. I am an entrepreneur and the founder and chef of Salvator's Tomato Pies here in Manona and throughout the Madison area. We located our commissary kitchen and our meat processing plant, state licensed meat processing plant here in Manona, so our headquarters is here. We have been active in civic concern since I was a teenager, and over the years have served on many city committees, have served on the Sun Prairie Business Improvement District Board, the Manona Personnel and Finance Committee, Public Works as the chair, Plan Commission, have been involved in housing issues for twenty-five years or so, both with the city of Madison and elsewhere, and working on housing issues with the county. I've been a scout leader in Manona with my sons, both of my sons, involved in scouting. And we're active in the community and in our neighborhoods. And really, just thank you very much for having this event today and giving us an opportunity to talk about ourselves and our candidacies.
Jerry Thompson.
I'm Jerry Thompson. I grew up in Manona, graduated from Manona Grove High School along with my six brothers and three sisters. I've watched Manona actually decrease from over ten thousand a village when they first became a city, down to eighty-seven hundred now. I've watched the community center change hands. Originally was dedicated to the youth of Manona. Youth Room used to be there. I was a supervisor way back when it was the Youth Room. I've been a member for most of the people here. It's been about seven years, so I don't recognize all of you anymore. But I also work for Prometrics, which is a, they proctor tests for a variety of professions. Also a driving instructor for Matt Area Driving School. So you see me probably going through Manona a lot with the white vehicle because I pick the students up at QuickTrip on the bottom of Manona Drive. I coached volleyball at La Follette High School. Basically, also want to thank for having this opportunity to speak to everyone. And I'm basically done.
Okay, that's it. Teresa.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Radermacher. I am a current council member, finishing up my freshman year like my colleague Patrick DePula. And I have really, truly enjoyed these past two years. I really have. I've really enjoyed working with this council. I think it's a very high-functioning group of people. We all respect and get along with each other. I've enjoyed getting to know folks better, making connections. It's just been a very rewarding experience. And I think most freshman council persons would probably say that after just one term, you kind of feel like you're just getting your feet under you. So there's a lot of good yet to do. I live just over on McKenna Road. My daughter is a freshman at university, went through Manona Grove High School, as many of you, your kids have. May have even had Jerry for a driving instructor, I don't know. And, gosh, by day, I work with district attorney offices in an IT capacity. I'm not the person that puts the two computers together and makes them talk to one another. That's, you know, that's a hardware thing. I'm more the person who creates the software that they use, and I need to really communicate and understand all that they need to do. Grew up on a small family farm south of Madison where my parents still live. In closing, I just want to sort of, well, definitely, thank the League of Women Voters and the Manona Community Media, but I also want to thank the other folks here. It takes a lot of guts to be here and to run, especially in a contested race. And no matter what happens, I really hope that we can all work together.
Rachel.
Hello, thank you. I'm Rachel Kugel. I just wanted to start by thanking the League of Women Voters and Joy for being here and Manona Community Media. I think it's really important that you offer this event so candidates can find, or so the candidates can express their views and the voters can find out more about us. So, thank you. I grew up in Racine, Wisconsin, went to the University of Wisconsin in Madison where I met my husband, who is from Manona originally. So we bought our first house in Manona in 2012, briefly moved to Cottage Grove, and moved back here in 2020. And when we moved back here, I started to feel the need or desire to get involved in the community. So I have applied for several committees, but have not heard back. And this seemed like another good option to use my expertise in business, to make a difference in the community and to serve the people of Manona. I have two daughters, ages seven and four. My oldest goes to Winnicott. My youngest will start their kindergarten next year. And in my professional life, I am the Director of Operations for a manufacturing company on the east side of Madison called Thermostor, where we manufacture dehumidifiers and water restoration equipment. So more familiar with work in the private sector, but excited for this opportunity to run and serve Manona.
Sure. My name is Brian Holmquist, and I'd like to first thank Joy and the League of Women's Voters, as well as Will and Manona Community Media for putting this event on. I think it's an important event, and thank all my colleagues for being here today. I think it'll be a good opportunity for us to be able to answer some questions that are unprepared, which are always a little bit nerve-wracking, I think, for everybody. Some of my background, I, well, I can start with my day job. It's probably the easiest. I work for the Madison Metropolitan School District. I'm an investigator. I investigate regarding civil rights and Title IX violations. And so it's a pretty specific aspect of what I look into. I am married to Rebecca Holmquist, and I have two kids, one off at college like Teresa's daughter, and one who is sophomore at MG21. So excited to have that opportunity here in the community as well. Yes, MG21, I see you back there. I have served on the city council for six years in the past, and then took a five-year break and continued to serve on the Plan Commission during that time. And now I have been back for this past term. And I really, I really respect the city council and the work that they need to put in. And it's a, it's a very difficult task. And it's a very complex task that I believe I'm starting to get to know after all of those years. And I encourage anybody to get involved at any level that they can. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will go to our questions that, again, were submitted online ahead of time and prepared by the Manona Community Media. First question, how long have you lived in Manona? And during that time, what volunteer services have you been involved with that benefit others in Manona? And the first candidate to answer is Jerry.
Let's see. I'm not going to say how long it was, but we moved here when I was one. That was probably one of the first houses on Flom Road, which I say Flom Road because I still remember my mom calling up for taxes and saying, "You live in Madison." No, 201 Flom Road is Manona. Admiral Drive is Manona. Could you repeat the question again?
What volunteer services have you been involved with that benefit the community?
Okay. Well, I have been a coach at La Follette for volleyball, boys volleyball. I have been a ref for Manona volleyball leagues. I've played in the Manona volleyball leagues. I, I do, it's not volunteer, but I do drive through Manona a lot with the drive-in school. I mean, the kids are familiar with Manona, and I want them to be safe in Manona. So I do that. Volunteer, I've been a, well, a steward for the Letter Carriers, National Association of Letter Carriers. And, I'll hand, I think that's it. Thank you.
Teresa? Do you need me to repeat the question?
Sure.
The question is, how long have you lived in Manona? And during that time, what volunteer services have you been involved with that benefit others in Manona?
Great. I have lived in Manona for about seventeen years. And one of the very first things I did when I moved to my neighborhood was, I just, I really felt the need to get to know my neighbors. So I invited everyone that I, if I could see your house, I'd send you an invitation. Everyone came over to my house, and we had a big, you know, just get-together. And that sort of blossomed into our block party, which has just been carried on every year since then. And I think that's really drawn our community together, our neighborhood together. At about that time, my daughter was pretty small. She got involved in Girl Scouts. It's the season, everybody, right? We're all eating Girl Scout cookies, or at least buying them. I was the cookie mom. Holy cow. Look into that cookie. That's a big deal. Then she went on to Winnicott Elementary School, where I learned about a recycling program that was in danger of being cut, terror cycle program, got involved in that, sort of resurrected it. She moved on to swim and dive, got involved in that. All-City Swim was here. I led up the zero-waste event. About that time, I got involved in the City Sustainability Committee, where I'd served for a number of years. And then I got involved in other things like the Manona Grove High School Solar Project, largest rooftop array in any K-12 school. And then after that, I ran for council, and here I am.
Rachel.
As I previously mentioned, my husband and I moved to Manona first in 2012, lived here for four years, briefly moved to Cottage Grove and moved back here in 2020. So in total, about eight years living in Manona. I don't have as much volunteer experience as the rest of the candidates, aside from filling in when my husband hasn't been able to coach our daughter's soccer team. But I do help him. My husband runs a scholarship program for Manona Grove High School students. So it supports scholarships for two student athletes each year. So I help him run the golf bowling event for that, to raise money. And then, aside from that, I do a lot of other volunteer work more in my professional life, but unfortunately hasn't directly impacted Manona residents.
Brian.
Yeah. I luck out that my son was born here, I think, pretty much the first year, so I can always remember how long I lived here. It's been approximately fifteen years. And in that time, I've served in a variety of different committees and commissions and different activities. One of the first ones, and some that are here might remember, the Old Family Attraction and Retention Committee was the first group that I joined. And it was my first involvement in city government, and it was a way to get involved. And that had to do with, we had a significantly declining population as it related to young families, and particularly related to the connection with our schools. And so we had a big push of like, how is it that we attract families to our community? It's a landlocked community. We're not going to just pop up a bunch of new housing. The housing that you were going to pay for here was very different than the housing that you were going to get out in Cottage Grove. And so we had a pretty significant task ahead of us of looking at, how is it that we attract families to the housing stock that we had at the time? How is it at the same time that we help support our individuals that were in these houses that found themselves in a house and wanting to stay in our community, but also not wanting to maintain their home in the same state? And so Family Attraction and Retention Committee, we got to the point where we actually got to dissolve that group, that we kind of achieved the mission of that original group. One of their offshoots was the Fall Festival, which was a beautiful event. And it started with the idea of like, we want something very inexpensive for families to be able to come out and do in our community. And I see my time is up.
Patrick.
Let's see. So I guess I'll start with in Manona. I served as, I served several years as a Cub Scout leader and a Boy Scout leader. I've coached rec soccer for Manona Parks and Recreation. I've served on the Chamber of Commerce. I've cooked brats at Beer Gardens at San Damiano. I've used my restaurants to raise money for youth hockey, other sports, a ton of community activism. I served as a county board supervisor during COVID. My company worked really hard to supply thirty-five thousand meals to those that were experiencing a crisis and were food insecure. And we did that in the first year of COVID, when we were struggling ourselves. And that had a great impact on the community. We continue to support organizations that continue to address food insecurity throughout the county, not just, not just our small Manona community. Ton of community activism with the Madison area Chefs Network. We founded a nonprofit to do that. Working on food policy throughout the greater Madison area. Served on lots of different committees as a volunteer from the Community Development Block Grant Commission in Madison to the Manona Plan Commission. And sometimes my wife looks at me when I come home from work and wonders if she's going to see me in the next three days. That's typically what happens. So, but, you know, all things said, it's, I've just been really privileged to be able to serve the community in that capacity and to have those opportunities.
The next question, Teresa will start. Please share your opinions regarding the city joining other Madison suburbs in the Madison Metro Bus Network.
I'm going to put out a perspective that, I want to give everyone a chance to speak on this, and I think there's an aspect that maybe hasn't been spoken about much. And I support, I support the Manona joining that regional network. And that's exactly why I support it. Because we are currently sort of, as one person put it in one of the many listening sessions that the Transit Commission offered, as one person put it, we're kind of in a black hole right now when it comes to transportation. And some folks might not know it, but from about the 1950s until about the mid-'80s, Madison Metro did come to Manona. And it operated the same-sized buses, much, much less clean than they are today, along just about the same route that is being proposed as the starting route. Routes change all the time. And then at one point, the mayor and the council members just decided to kind of go it alone and start their own bus company. And I can see the charm and, you know, of having your own little cute system, but it really doesn't do much good to put yourself on an island in many ways. We need to join and provide our residents an opportunity to get in and out of Manona. I know my family certainly would, would use it, and I think others would too. Thank you.
Rachel.
Thank you. So upfront, I was not in favor of partnering with Madison Metro. I am not in favor of the current proposed route that exists. I do have concerns about the safety of the bus traveling that frequently down our streets that I already feel cannot correctly handle pedestrian, bike, and automobile traffic. I do think that there is a potential for a route that still serves Manona without having to travel through the residential streets that we have. And I do think that the bus that we had, the commuter bus we had, was part of, part of the charm in this kind of small-town Manona feel. So I was disappointed in this decision to partner, but that decision has been made. So now it's just moving forward and choosing the best route that serves the community. Thank you.
Brian.
Yeah, this question could probably have used double, double time. Some may know that I ended up not voting for this at council. And my reason actually not has to do, I believe we need to be part of regional transportation. I believe that this is the right move for us to be able to move and partner. I have heard through the listening sessions, and the Transit Committee has done tremendous amount of work over two years, listening to feedback and different opinions. And I think have been trying to make adjustments and accommodations based on what they've been hearing over that time. I think there continue to be some aspects that were pinch points or considerations, which I shared when we took that vote that night. I believe those items could be addressed, and they were more specific to route issues. And I believe that we're continuing to make some efforts around those right route issues and some of the concerns that I think people still have. Maybe not all share those same concerns, but I think some do. And we should do our best to acknowledge what are those items? How is it that we're going to address those specifically? And then how do we move forward as we implement that current route? Or adjustments on that route? And how is it that we move forward and continue to kind of honor the feedback that we're gathering, but also moving to a regional transportation system, which makes sense for Manona?
Patrick.
Thank you. I would like to start by just saying that I am incredibly proud of our current council, that we have addressed transportation issues for our seniors and given them a much greater range throughout the county at this point by giving them access to power transit. For our people that are mobility-challenged and our citizens that have difficulty getting around, they're now able to go from Manona to the west side of Madison, to Middleton, beyond. They're able to go all these places now that before they were limited to within one mile of Manona. So I'm really happy that we were able to address those concerns and give people much more transportation options at a much lower cost than what they were experiencing before. That said, regional transportation is important. As someone else mentioned earlier, back in the, long ago, Manona's population used to be ten thousand, and that was largely because of the amount of kids that were on our streets. And that's marked difference today. So with those additional children on our streets, to address safety issues, safety issues weren't really a concern then regarding the buses with much more children on our streets then. And I understand that people are concerned about safety because anything new definitely is questionable, right? And I understand people's desire to do that. But Madison Metro, very specifically, will not put buses on streets that they deem unsafe. We, as a council, will address safety issues, and we're all committed to that. And again, regional transportation, it's a DEI issue. It's an equity issue. It's, this is a thing that, by not participating, we're basically telling the rest of the community that Manona is excluding them to a degree. So thank you very much.
Our next question will be, Rachel will start.
Hang on.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
I am opposed. I was opposed.
I am opposed, I was opposed to joining the Madison Metro for the reasons, Madison Metro goes by Monona, to begin with. It goes by on Monona Drive and picks up by Lake Edge. It goes by on East Broadway, several places, and that's where current apartments are. Most people don't want it going through their, well, okay, we can have it, but don't go through our street. Also, the savings, I think, is minimal compared to what the damage it does to the roads, the safety for the children. Also, the Monona Transit is very efficient. I actually took that. I called, I didn't know how soon you had to, but I called, they dropped me off. It goes all the way down to University Hospital back, but you can call in between, I think, when they do one of the final runs, all the way through, there's another bus that you can call and it will take you. I had cataract surgery about 10 days ago, called that morning, they picked me up at 11 o'clock, dropped me off right at Davis and Dur, and actually my neighbor, she picked me up because they don't do individual after, I believe, 2:30, 3:00. I'm not that familiar, but I think it's a very good, efficient system. Also, it cost me a buck fifty. I don't think Madison Metro, you're going to get on there for a buck fifty. I mean, I just think, Monona Transit served Monona well. It will pick up the seniors. I've seen them, and I live right across the senior centers. They will call, and they are handicap accessible. They have, where they can secure them, and they do take the handicap. And I've seen them, so they're a very efficient program, and I was disappointed to see the Madison buses come through. I was here when Madison buses used to go through. And yes, they were used a lot more then. Like I say, we had much more children then, and it was a larger population.
Thank you, and thanks for keeping me honest. Sorry about that. All right. Now, the next question will be addressed first by Rachel. Please provide your position on how you will balance priorities with financial discipline to make Monona economically sustainable.
Thank you. So fiscal responsibility is extremely important to me. I, in my daily life, as Director of Operations, have to make decisions of, obviously, we could use everything in the world, right? All the help, all the resources, but you have a limited budget and limited funds. And I think it's even more important, being a council member, that you're spending other people's money, and you need to take that into respect, right? And so you can't say yes to everything. You have to prioritize, and prioritize, it doesn't mean no forever. It means maybe no for now, but we have to make sure that, you know, we work to bring down our debt level. I know that we are constrained with our operating budget as well, and so we need to take a hard look at where we're spending our money, where we can make cuts, so that we can keep offering the things that are most important to our citizens, but also not increasing that burden and not increasing our debt. Thank you.
Brian?
Yeah. I would say our financial outlook is probably our most challenging problem that we have ahead of us, both in an operational standpoint, I'll start there. Where the vast majority of our money goes to salaries and staff. And what we've been able to compensate for staff over the years has been held fairly consistent for the approximate 15 years I've lived here. The amount we've been able to raise wages for staff has been very, very limited and very capped. If you've served on any committee and have been there during budget season, you've heard salaries are flat or salaries are at 1%. Everything else, we're looking at a 0% or 1% increase. What that results in is you end up with a lot of staff that are wonderful staff and have a wealth of experience. You end up with such pay inequities of our staff that are here and put in a number of years. And you might have new staff that are coming in and actually have a higher range than a seasoned staff member who may have been here 15, 20 years. And we can't continue to do that. And we're not asking to increase the number of FTEs, but what we're looking for is how is it that we continue to do and provide the services that people expect, that we want and we need, in a way, and pays for staff to be able to do that in a fair and equitable way. I didn't get to Capitol, and I'm done. So.
Thank you. You know, fiscal responsibility is important. And I think that when we look at the entire picture of the city, it's really easy to pick out that public safety, public works, and fire are the great bulk of our budgets. Those are the needs, so to speak, that any community needs to prioritize. And then followed by those needs, we have our wants and things that make our community a richer place to be, like parks and park programs and other things that make our community super valuable. And that's why, you know, when a house is for sale in Monona, it disappears almost instantaneously with nine or 10 different offers in the first, you know, 48 hours. So, that said, prioritizing our needs is important. We're going to be seeing 195,000 people move to the greater Madison Metro area in the next, well, by 2050. And that's going to bring with it 127,000 new jobs. We need to position ourselves as a city to, you know, provide housing for folks and continue to work on development issues that will provide relief to our current citizens via taxes. The more that we build in our town, the greater tax relief there is for individual citizens in our neighborhoods. So we need to keep that in mind. It's not just about cutting, it's about increasing revenue to the city. That is also important. And we do have a pretty slim budget right now. I mean, not many people know this, but our planning department is 1.5 people in it, and now it is time. So thank you.
Jerry?
Well, I think fiscal responsibility is probably one of the hardest decisions for the council and the mayor to keep. I mean, we want to keep our services, but we also do not want to outtax the people. So seniors should not be taxed out of their homes. I mean, I know my, even though the mill rate may go down, our taxes go up every year. And somehow, we do have to bring businesses, new development in Monona, but I think it has to be responsible and not change Monona too much. And yeah, like I say, we want to keep all the services, and we also want to keep it responsible. Thank you.
Teresa?
Thank you. Going last, and try not to repeat much of what's already been said, but I agree with so much as what's already been said, especially from my two colleagues. You know, thrift is a value I was raised with. Like, you can't believe how thrifty. One can of tuna fish for a family of four. I was just thinking about that today. But it's not just about, it is about saving money, it's also about bringing more in. And Patrick brings up a very solid point about the way that there's a formula that really feeds into the way that a city is able to shape their budget, and that is directly tied to the amount of new construction that we have. It's not a formula we chose, it's a formula we have to live within. And when we can bring in more development to our community, we increase our tax base, we welcome more folks to enjoy the services we have. I want to point out that Monona has a double A-plus bond rating. We are tremendously fiscally responsible already. When budget season comes around, the mayor has already met with all of the city departments and pretty much cut all of their requests in half before the council even sees it. And then we cut it some more. And also to remind folks that when you get your property tax bill at the end of the year, it can be a little confusing, but the city has done a spectacular job at trying to educate folks about what percentage of your total bill, only 30% is going to the city, right? And I'm at zero. So, there you go.
So I don't think I'm skipping anybody this time. The next question, Brian will address first. In recent years, DEI has been a focus for the city, diversity, equity, inclusion. What is the city doing? And is it enough, or do you think more needs to be done?
Yeah, great question. So the idea around diversity, equity, inclusion, and I would add in a sense of belonging, because I think actually that is one of our strongest aspects and values that should be at the forefront of that, of how is it that you end up with a more diverse community is by having a sense of belonging, that people see themselves in the community and feel like they belong there, which is a key aspect. I believe the community has done a lot. I think this is an area that we will continue to need to dig into at various kind of efforts, both from a community standpoint as well as from a city standpoint. How is it that we continue to have inclusive practices? How is it that we provide opportunities for people that don't look like me and the rest of us up here? That is a very difficult and challenging task ahead of us. I would say Teresa will probably have a lot, hopefully, to share with us. She's been helping lead the implementation phase regarding our DEIB plan. And so you first have this idea around a report and looks at, man, there's a lot of work for us to be doing. And then how is it that you actually operationalize some of that? How is it that you put some of that in action? Monona community has done some efforts around, if you listen to the radio, I'm at zero. Sorry.
Patrick?
It's going to take me back to transportation for a second. You know, the work that we've done with public transportation is definitely a DEI issue. And, you know, something that we touched on a little bit regarding that is, you know, why do we have bus routes that go through the city of Monona? And that's in part because it needs to be equitable to people that have disabilities. And in order for them to qualify for door-to-door transportation with Madison Metro, they have to be within three-quarters of a mile of an established bus route. Without that, we're leaving our seniors and our disabled, which is an equity issue, out of the discussion and without transportation. So in addition to that, we have, much effort has been expended by the city with our DEI Committee, our DEI Implementation Committee, our work with Nehemiah, addressing inequities, addressing the way that we speak with people, the way that we interact with others of different cultures, how we communicate, how we are providing information to our citizens when it comes to utilizing YouTube now, where all of our meetings are recorded and they're available to the public 24 hours a day, because we all know that people that work one, two, three, four jobs aren't going to be able to show up at meetings on a regular basis. So to be able to see what's going on and be included in their city action and city activity remotely is very important and is definitely an equity issue. This is a long process. We're not going to have all the answers today, but the city is dedicated, much more than some larger cities in Wisconsin, to DEI efforts, and we continue to work towards equity.
Jerry?
Yep, I'm going to keep it brief. The DEIB, I think Monona is very welcoming. I mean, they're accepting of anyone. They make people feel comfortable with different programs, a variety of individuals, no matter what background you are, we're accepting. And I just think we do have programs, I know there's going to be some affordable housing, which everyone is treated equal, no matter where they come from. And I think Monona stands that way.
Teresa?
This is why I love working with my current colleagues so much. I just found myself just unable to stop nodding my head as I was listening to you two. I just, some years ago, there was an incident here in Monona involving some of our police with some young men of color, and that was very unfortunate. And it sparked an appropriate response from the city to really dig into some of our issues that we may not even be aware we have. At the same time, a group of citizens got together, and I failed to mention this earlier in my volunteer work, citizens got together and created a program called ARC, Anti-Racism Conversations, where we met and really started to figure out our own stuff around this issue and what we could do as non-elected people. The city's response was to immediately put together sort of a partnership with Nehemiah, look at what can be done, and put together a group of people to study and ultimately come up with a report of recommendations. And then now, as Brian mentioned, we're in the implementation phase of that report, and the mayor has appointed me to that committee, one that I truly enjoy being a part of. And that report recommendation sort of breaks work down into three categories, housing and transportation, communication, and then what you might just call community capacity building, as one member put it, you know, winning the hearts and minds of people. How do we go about doing that? But when it comes to, we've got our comprehensive plan, our Renew Monona Plan, reviewing TIF extension funds, how we can do those, different, getting materials in Spanish. We've got the conectados show on VMO. I also want to say the city has also, with our adjustments in salary for our staff, keep in mind that a lot of the lowest-paying jobs are held by women. So there's an equity issue there that we are addressing.
Rachel?
I'm not going to spend as much time on what the city has done, since I feel like that's been fairly well addressed. I think it's just about continuing the work, continuing the momentum that the city has already gained, and that we are continuing to educate ourselves on this issue and furthering, you know, what else can be done. So I think, you know, you guys have done great work already, and it's just keep the momentum going. Thank you.
Our next question. What do you think about affordable workforce housing in Monona? Affordable workforce housing in Monona? How can Monona attract more affordable workforce housing? And Patrick starts.
All right. Kind of have a long history with this, starting back as the Chair of the Community Development Block Grant Commission for the City of Madison and on the Housing Committee, and also as the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Work Group, where we created the first Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the City of Madison, and also worked on inclusionary zoning, which ultimately got shut down by the Supreme Court. Monona, you know, we have some development issues here because we're landlocked, so the only thing that we can do is increase density and redevelop underutilized parcels. So we're really looking at, how do we leverage these underutilized parcels and make these projects advantageous to folks that want to develop workforce housing? And when we talk about workforce housing, we're talking about things that are at 60% of county median income. We're not talking about super-low income levels at like 15% or 12%. We're looking at, you know, teachers and firefighters and doctors. And while that lower level is very important, it's hard for a city the size of ours to find the financial resources to make those things happen. So we need to leverage county funds. We need to leverage LIHTC, we need to, LIHTC, which is the state income tax, I'm sorry, state tax credits for housing. We need to leverage our own TIF financing to do this. And again, it's, development is expensive in Monona to begin with, because we're looking at brownfields, we're not looking at greenfields, we're not Cottage Grove, we can't just absorb new land and create new buildings. So all of these things are challenging for us. But we have a couple of great projects in the pipeline. One broke ground recently, addressing those affordable housing issues, and we continue to aggressively work on various toolkits and expedited review processes and all these things that the city can do. So thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah. Like I say, Monona's landlocked, and we don't have very much land available, but I do know the city is working on, and we do have several affordable housing projects. I'm not sure how they're financed, but we do have them coming, I believe, on East Broadway, where the old chief's auto body was. There are some affordable housing, I think, planned there. I'm not sure what the actual percentages are. And I'm glad to see they finally, at 353 Owen Road, when that burned down in March, they are finally building that. I'm not sure why the finances, that's one place where I think they could have built that higher, and I think it's only going three stories. And that is for people that are really disadvantaged, whether it's financially or disabled. And, you know, some of that, I'm not sure, I wish they would have looked into that. But it's not easy. So when I say that, I'm not trying to criticize the city council or the mayor. It's just, but I think they are doing a decent job. We've got some apartments that are planned for affordable housing, and I think they are addressing. We're only a city of 8,700 people. We can't take care of everyone.
Teresa?
As far as how can the city attract, you know, more affordable housing? Well, one, I support affordable housing, workforce housing. I think it's really important to say that when a property is owned by a private individual, the city cannot just go in and tell that person what to do, who to sell it to, which developer to work with. That we're, we just, that's not, that's not how it works. It's, somebody else owns that property. So what you could do is just try to work with the right developers, try to attract the right developers. The developers that already know how to put the pieces together to make affordable housing financially, you know, attractive to them. And we have done that. We've made fabulous strides toward doing that and getting to know the right developers. Patrick mentioned TIF funds, as I had myself mentioned earlier. I just want to, what is affordable? I'm just, you know, I look at some of the rents on these houses. I mean, what kind of people would be, we'd be attracting? They'd probably look like me, because when I add up all of my annual expenses on what I pay for my mortgage and my rent and my property insurance and my escrow, it is less than some of the rents on these places. So I think there's a misconception about what maybe affordable housing looks like. We just need more housing in general, quantity. The more quantity we have, the lower the prices are going to be for everyone.
Rachel?
So, agree with what everyone has said. You know, it's an issue more of, we need more housing. You know, it's an issue more of, we need more housing, and so how do we attract more development in our already limited spaces? And not just, you know, affordable workforce housing, but affordable housing for our elderly population as well, so we can continue to support them living in Manona and taking, getting access to our amenities for our older population, as well as, you know, getting younger populations to be able to move in and to own houses, which, again, can a lot of times be cheaper than rent for apartments, even when they are affordable. So we just need to continue to attract new developments. Thank you.
Brian.
Yeah. A lot has been said, so I'll take a slightly different angle. And that has to do with affordable housing that exists. We do have some pretty significant aging housing in our stock. And one of the tools or strategies has been to use TIF money. Renew Manona is one of those such efforts. And that is being able to help kind of fix up some of the housing stock that we do have, but also we've been exploring, and I believe with some of our new TIF projects, we'll be looking at a similar type of program that might be able to set aside some of those funds to help our current more affordable housing come up to more of today's standards. We have some pretty significantly older housing stock that is multifamily, that is deteriorating. And not everything will be able to be built into a very high, very dense location with workforce housing. So how is it that we are able to also play out this other end, which might have some multifamily housing that could use some rehabilitation to allow those properties to come up to today's standards? In addition, Teresa said it well, like, we can't tell property or what to do, but we do have the leverage tool when we have TIF money. Even without that, we have the opportunity, and that is a key piece with our planning department around education for developers that are here that might not know about all of the layers of lasagna that it takes to make a project affordable.
Thank you.
Next question. A recent wage study shows that city salaries lag behind those in neighboring communities. What would you do to address this? And Jerry starts this one.
Well, that's a hard one, because I know finances are tight, but thinking how to address that, I'm not sure how we're going to address that, because you want to retain the employees. I mean, everyone who works, they've been there for a while, they know their job, getting new people. I don't think LTEs is the solution. I mean, you want an employee that gets benefits, that's going to stay and help the city run properly. Achieving that, I'm not sure how you're going to do that, because you've got to bring money in. And I'm not sure the solution for that.
Teresa.
Yeah. The city recently contracted with an organization called GovHR, and we hired them to do a really comprehensive study which, which revealed what you just said, that our employees are compensated lower than our neighborhood communities. And because of that, we've experienced almost an 18% turnover rate in some of our departments. Folks literally going, doing the exact same job, just in the community down the road. And we're losing a lot of institutional knowledge and expertise. And so what the city council did was, we agreed to adopt, as recommended by GovHR, we agreed to adopt an employee classification and compensation plan that would bring wages to more of an equitable and just a fair, a fair level. And I voted in strong recommendation, in strong support of that. It's the right thing to do. The staff, staff is 80% of our budget. It's a big part of it, but, you know, budgets show where your values are. And we value our staff because they are the best, and we want to keep them.
Rachel.
I mean, I agree with what Teresa said. You can't do anything without the people, so you need to show your people that you value them and that you want them to stay. It takes a lot more time and money to train new people than to retain your existing workforce. So I know that this is going to be a hot topic issue over the next year, especially with the proposed referendum on the election in November. But you have to, you have to pay people in order to keep them. So I support what the community's done so far to investigate and to see what can be do, can be done to retain the staff that we have.
Brian.
Yeah. One of the concerns or difficulties with our compensation study has to be with, we are a community of 87,000 or 8,700 people, but we're in the sea of Dane County. And so we're competing with other communities that are much larger and have budgets that are beyond our belief. And so we have, we've been able to retain employees for many, many years by looking at compensation as a total package and trying to make adjustments on a variety of aspects to make it, to help understand that compensation is more than just the dollar value. However, we have really reached a point where that, all those other aspects of your compensation, we've been able to stretch those as far as we can, and we really do need to honor and support our staff in a way that respects them in a total compensation package. And I agreed with our recent approval of that compensation study and the plan to try to be at our 60% of our peers when it relates to our compensation, as well as to make sure that many of our staff that have had significant longevity with us, that are severely out of range, that we look at how is it that we bring them up to a range? We have staff that have been here 20 years and are well, well below their colleagues, who might be one or two years in, in a neighboring community. So I fully support that shift.
Patrick.
It's always fun when you're the last person to speak, and you've already heard, like, really good commentary from everybody else, and you're like, what am I going to say that's any different? No. But again, thank you, Teresa, thank you, Brian, thank you, everyone else for the contributions. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is that the legislature kind of punishes municipalities, especially in Dane County or Milwaukee County or whatever, because, you know, we can only increase taxes if we have this concept of net new construction. If we're building new buildings, then we can, you know, increase our tax base and we can increase our budget. But as we mentioned before, we're a landlocked community, so that those opportunities are few and far between. So we end up lagging behind, and it negatively affects our budget, and that's one of the reasons we end up lagging behind places like Cottage Grove or Sun Prairie, where they could just, you know, develop new parcels on the periphery and increase their tax base. We can't. And we're competing, like Brian said, we're competing with those same municipalities for the same resources. You know, the way that we're discussing on how to address these things is through our operating referendum that we've been working on for the past, for the past, I don't know, year, basically. We're not the only municipality that's going to have to seriously consider an operating referendum because of the way the budgetary process is structured by the legislature. We don't really have much in the way of options if we're going to address those inequities with pay, where we, we, we need to do it, we have to do it.
All right. Next question. We often hear Manona described as a landlocked community. How does it affect how the city is run and what challenges does that create? Teresa starts.
Can I just repeat what Patrick said? That's exactly what, what Patrick just said is exactly the thing, right? You know, we are, and what I said earlier too, we are bound by this formula that requires us to this net new construction, right? This, we have to keep developing. And so a friend of mine, I believe it was actually, I was talking with Patrick, the three of us were talking, and a friend of mine said, everyone says we're landlocked, but you know, we're not airlocked, you know? We can build up. And that's what we need to do. We need to find places where it would be appropriate to build up, to build higher. People love our neighborhoods, our quiet neighborhoods. We can keep them that way. Maybe we find designated corridors in the city along the drive or, you know, Broadway, and we just build up. And that addresses a lot of other questions that we've already sort of spoken about as well. It's all connected.
Rachel.
Yep. So I think this has been touched on quite a bit already. But yes, we are landlocked. We don't have the advantage of a lot of neighboring suburbs of Madison to kind of sprawl out. So like Teresa said, we, we do need to find those places where we can go up to increase density in order to increase income, right? And that is, that's kind of the future that we need to look towards.
Brian, you want to just repeat?
I'd point out for people to pay attention to our upcoming review, and we need to provide the new comprehensive plan. We're in our 10-year review, this is every 10-year. There's a segment of that comprehensive plan that you're required to look at, and that has to do with housing. The last time we did this comprehensive review, we looked in our, we spent a bulk of our time in the housing section really talking about owner-occupied housing versus rental housing. And we spent a lot of time helping distinguish what is it that our community was really looking for, and this balance between owner-occupied and rental. And at that time, our eye wasn't necessarily as focused on high-density housing, but I think that you're going to see a major shift in that comprehensive plan review that comes up this year, of how is it that we shape that plan in a way that projects our next 10 years? Where is it that we do want this increase in density? There's a proposal of the old Jiffy Loops site, for those that remember that site. If that proposal goes through as, as kind of put, that would be the highest density that we've ever done in this city, the highest. It's a half acre. I think it was going to be at, I'm going to be off, right around the 90-ish mark units per acre. It's not a full acre site, but that is unheard of in our community, and I think that is the direction that we're going to need to move in certain corridors.
Patrick.
Ditto? No. No. So, yeah, obviously dealing with our density issues is where we need to talk about things. And, you know, we've been, at least I've been tossing around this idea of, like, when we're talking about our public safety building, because that's another issue that's, I'm sure, maybe I'm foreshadowing the next question, I don't know. I don't want people to think that I already know what the questions are, but...
No one does, no one does.
But hopefully that's not the next question. But like, looking at, looking at our public safety building, looking at the proposal for that, you know, maybe we should be thinking, like Teresa mentioned, you know, the air rights above it. We should be looking at developing four stories of senior affordable housing above the public safety building, because then EMS services are actually in the building, and it's not like it's unknown. Downtown Madison, you have Fire Station Number One that has, what is it, 14 stories of senior housing above it? And that works out, and people aren't complaining. And as far as I've known from the firefighters that work there, lots of people hang out in the windows and like to check out the same firefighters that happen to be in a calendar that they put out every year, and they have a really good time rating them. But anyway. So there's some entertainment there, too. But seriously, you know, identifying those quarters on Manona Drive and Broadway, looking at underutilized parking areas, like at South Town perhaps, you know, just spitballing ideas that, you know, where development possibilities exist, that's kind of what we should be focusing on and thinking about, and how do we bring that added value to the city and use those funds to moderate taxes for everyone else.
Jerry.
Like previously said, we are landlocked. It is hard. We have to choose wisely what we are doing with the available lands we do have. Certain instances, like to help the diversity, the DEIB, like you mentioned, 353 Owen Road, I wish they would have built that a lot higher. I do not want to change the Mano's landscape too much. I believe the higher density, you have higher crime, and we don't need, Manona is already a high-property crime city. We are like, I believe, some 70% above the nation, and if you look it up in the FBI, you'll see that. There's different stats where you can look up. And I just, we are already a fairly dense, and I just would like to equal that out. We don't want to overdo it with apartments. We haven't had a subdivision of homes, and we've had one in 50 years. It would be nice, and we do have very limited space for that. It would be nice that people would be able to find a house a little bigger than what they originally had. I think lots of people like myself, I've had to add on to my house versus finding a house a little bigger. And we do not have the luxury of, like I say, landlocked, we have very limited space for that. And I think Manona also needs to register that. Increase density increases crime.
Okay. Next question. Regarding the San Damiano property, do you favor or oppose renovating the Frank Alice House? What do you believe needs to happen on the property? And that goes to Rachel first.
So I know that is a hot topic issue, what to do with the house. I think the Friends of San Damiano has also kind of held on making a decision with what to do with the house, because part of it is, they need to get fundraising in order to develop that property. And so part of that decision lies within people who are, people who are giving money to do that project. I personally don't know how you can affordably rehab that house to its original state. I think that the burden is very high in order to get it there, because of all the changes that have been made to it over the years. And I think the community would be better served with a new structure that would allow for more income or, you know, bringing in some revenue to the city by, you know, having events there or having other functions there, so that more of the community can get together and enjoy it. So, yeah, I think overall, I would vote to get rid of the house, but there's a lot of work to be done.
Brian.
Yeah. We are currently reviewing the master plan, has been brought forward to council, and we've had our first kind of run-through. And as Rachel points out, like, the idea of the house or no house is still kind of up in the air, and I think, she points out, the wonderful kind of problem ahead of us. And that has to do with if, if we are to create an event space that is going to be able to attract particular types of events to bring people to enjoy that property, as well as potentially have a revenue source to help feed that property. I think you have an issue with the current house. The amount of maintenance that needs to be done, even to just maintain the property until a decision is made, is fairly significant. I think we do have a short period of time that we might be able to have some maintenance while, while there's some decision to be made, but I think at this point, that house will likely come down in the master planning stage, because the level of maintenance that would be required until a decision is made to make substantial changes to it is too long and too much of an investment, and it would not be able to be utilized in the meantime.
Patrick.
As Brian mentioned, you know, we received the report from the Friends group with the different, the strategic, the strategic plan for the property. And I just wanted to be clear, too, that it's not the Friends group that will decide the future of the property, it's the council that will decide the future of the property. And weighing that, I'm of the opinion that I'm in favor of whatever is in the economic interest of the City of Manona. That's the best route forward with the property. And also, the Friends group is raising money to work on the improvements for that parcel. So if it becomes feasible for the house, that's fine. If it's, if it makes more sense for the, for a purpose-built facility from an economic standpoint, that's, that's also fine. I don't have a distinct opinion at this point in which direction I'm going, because I've yet to fully comprehend the financial impact in either, either direction. So I'm waiting to see, and will continue to pay attention to it. And like I said, whatever, whatever is in the best economic interest for the City of Manona is the best route forward with that particular parcel and how we develop it.
Jerry.
Could you repeat that question again?
Regarding the San Damiano property, do you favor or oppose renovating the Frank Alice House? What do you believe needs to happen on the property?
Sorry, being up here, I'm not used to being up in the spotlight, so it's like my head is spinning. The San Damiano, ideally, it would be nice if Manona had a billionaire that could donate $18 million and re, you know, redo the Frank Alice home. It's, like I say, it's one of those, it'd be nice to keep that, it'd be nice to keep the property as it is. I don't think that's economically feasible. I would like to see, actually, there's a little section on the right north side where actually would be an ideal section for maybe eight or nine new homes, which would be the most we've had since, I think there are three new ones on Midmore that have torn down houses and new ones, but it would be nice to find some new homes. And I believe there are Indian mounds that were there, and I'm not sure, they probably have to do archaeological studies to see if they can do any digging there. have to do archaeological studies to see if they can do any digging there. So it's one of those things. It'd be nice to see whatever they do there, that the taxpayers are not going to be a burden to them. I would like to see the property stayed pretty much a good, at least seven acres. There is lake property, which is valuable property, but I do not want to see a bunch of apartments. Like I say, ideally, it would be a billionaire donate $18 billion so we could just redo that and use it for maybe heritage for the whole chunk. I mean, the Indians that were, we were, took the land and also maybe some art museums, something where it would substan itself. Thank you.
Teresa?
So just a little background, back in 2020, it was when the council at the time unanimously approved the purchase of that property. A Friends group was formed and they've been doing the fundraising for all of the improvements. And this is a group of people that know what they're doing. I mean, people who by trade are professional fundraisers and involved in the historic, the world of historical preservation. There have been over 6,000 individual inputs that this committee has collected and feedback. And at the end of it all, what really is the theme that comes out is that the property around the house is what is most valuable. And, and the Friends have recognized that, and in the master plan that we just received at council, that's all, everyone agrees about what to do with the property, right? And there's no reason to not move for, move forward with that changes. As far as the house is concerned, I'm kind of where Patrick is, you know? I look at the house and I think, well, you know, that's kind of what sets it apart. It's a differentiator. It makes that location different from any other public park. But then you think, well, what could we do in that space? Could we do the same sort of level of programming? And as far as how much will it take to get, I think that money can be raised. I really do. I think we can raise the money to get the house back in working order if we need to, if we care to. I think it just, I am going to defer to the experts. I am not one of them. They know what they're doing. They've studied this in and out and from every angle you can imagine. They're very hard at work and we'll just see what happens.
All right. Our next question, Brian starts this one. How would you handle a vote if you believe that your opinion is at odds with the desires of your constituents?
Oh, yeah. I think that's a wonderful question. I think it's important, I go back to kind of what I've learned serving in council and as a parent prior to serving in council, and that goes back to, some of you guys might remember, when the vote was to close Maywood. And I remember strongly being opposed to Maywood being closed. I was a parent of a young child who was at Maywood, and my second child was going to be entering Maywood, and I thought it was the end of the world. And I remember distinctly a school board meeting where there were many of us that were speaking about the importance of this building and holy moly, there's no way our kids are going to be able to survive over at Winnicott. Like, it's such a big place, they won't be able to figure it out. And of course, I was quite wrong. And what I learned from that was what the school board did in that moment. I think they all knew the right thing to do was to close Maywood. But they heard from a variety of families and an outcry that they didn't want the building closed. And I learned something strong that night, and it was that there were individuals on that school board that decided to actually keep Maywood open for one additional year. And in that additional year, they spent a lot of time and effort to help change the minds and help address the issues that were raised that they might not have believed were the issues to make that move happen.
Thank you. Patrick?
So, I don't want to serve on a council that everyone agrees all the time. I mean, because if we all agree all the time, well, then, you know, there's, there's no debate, right? So I think that differences of opinions lend themselves to education sometimes, in the sense that I know that there's been many times in my life where, you know, I feel a particular way about something and I think it's pretty strong, and if I'm open to listening to another, you know, I learn something that changes my opinion. So I think that being able and having the courage to vote against the group sometimes on principle or based on data that you are privy to is, is an important attribute. And I think that without being able to do that, then you just end up stymying debate sometimes. So I think in any functioning deliberative body, debate is important.
Jerry?
Yeah, I think staying flexible, you need, you should be able to change your mind, but if you feel strongly against something, even though the rest of the council votes against it, I think you should keep it that way. Sometimes, being educated, you realize, jeez, I didn't think of that. Okay, maybe I finally do agree with you guys, because there's no sense in arguing the point. Just argue. I mean, you hold your ground, or you, okay, yeah, you guys made some good points, I guess I, I wasn't thinking that way and I agree with you. So it's kind of an, it depends. It's an if or or.
Teresa?
Yeah. If I, so the question was, what would I do if I were, if I realized that the way I thought was at odds with my constituents? I'd probably ask myself why that was, you know? We need to bring humility to a lot of, you know, the way we present ourselves in the world. If you find yourself on the opposite side of an argument, it's, you can't just assume that the other side doesn't know what they're talking about. It's probably a good reason why they feel that way. You have conversations with people, you work it out. We all are far more similar than dissimilar. We all want the same things at the end of the day. And there's also, you know, what you do and there's how you do it, which I would argue a lot of times, the second one counts more. Bring people along. Maybe slow down, take your foot off the gas pedal and just let the situation simmer down a little bit. And how we disagree is extremely important. And that we have facts and that we base decisions on facts is pretty critical, so.
Rachel?
Similar to what Teresa said, you know, I think you first need to understand why you're at odds with the constituents. I do think one of my strengths is being able to hear both sides of an argument and logically make a decision, not based on my personal feelings, but based on the facts that I presented. So I think a lot of times it comes down to, do the voters or the people of Manona not understand the whole picture? And is that a failure of, you know, if I were elected, of me not getting the information across or the, a failure of the city not providing enough information for people to get on the same page? So I think that's really important. But I do think that, you know, this position is to serve the people of Manona. You are voted in to, to not just vote what you prefer. It is voting for what is best for the city and what the majority of the people in the city want. So I do think that's very important. And I think you can vote for decisions that you personally wouldn't agree with, but that you think the majority would want. So that's important.
Okay. The next question's related. How would you handle a vote on an issue if you believe that your constituents' desires may negatively impact a minority or marginalized community? And Patrick starts this one.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah. How would you handle a vote on an issue if you believe that your constituents' desires may negatively impact a minority or marginalized community?
If your constituents' desires?
If your constituents want you to do one thing and you think that it would, it would negatively impact?
But we're talking about a specific situation, right? Yes.
I'm just relating. The question that was, that was, was...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So it's that specific situation. Let me, sorry, trying to understand the question as much as I can here. Just one point of clarification. So the question involves how I would vote on something if, if my constituents felt that it negatively affected a minority population?
If you believe that your constituents' desires would negatively impact the marginalized community, that's, your constituents want you to do something that would negatively impact a marginalized community, how would you deal with that?
So fundamentally, and this is a very vague question, like as far as what the circumstance is, but fundamentally, then I would probably vote, I would, my vote would take into consideration how that would impact, that situation would impact the marginalized community. So it would be unlikely that I would vote to further marginalize a marginalized community.
Right. Sorry, there's no specifics here. It was a question submitted by, by one of your constituents.
Yeah. So to, so to be clear, if, if the consequences of my vote would, would serve to further marginalize someone, I would not vote for that.
Right. Jerry?
Yeah, it's pretty black and white. If their desire was to affect them negatively, well, that's, yeah, I'd vote no. I mean, if it affected them negatively, that's another thing. But if their desire, depending how it affect them, that's, yeah, you just don't vote that way.
Teresa?
Yeah. I was, I was thinking of the question that my constituents want this, meaning the majority of people, but it will affect negatively a little minority of people.
You, you, right, I know. You believe that it will, that they would, what they want would negatively affect?
Absolutely. And at the end of the day, I am a huge proponent of all DEIB initiatives, bringing all people under the tent, welcoming Manona to all people, and it makes me stronger, it makes us all stronger. Diversity makes everything better. And I would not support any policy that would hurt a community, a group of people that is already working a little harder than the rest of us have to just to get by.
Rachel?
I think, you know, like everyone else said, this question is a little complicated to answer because without a specific example, I'm having a hard time thinking of a scenario this would apply to. But I think it goes back to my previous answer in that, how do we communicate or educate the voters and the constituents so that they understand why, you know, voting yes on something would marginalize people further? But I also think, you know, very few votes are black and white, as in this vote, yes, marginalize these people without some other aspects to it. So I think it's, it's a complex question. Obviously outright, I wouldn't directly vote to negatively impact marginalized communities. But I think, you know, you have to do a lot of research and education of both yourself and the voters so that, again, you can agree on the same page. And if you can't agree, then you just need to make the vote and then continue that education afterwards.
Brian?
I agree with everybody here that the idea of, on the simplicity of the complex question, I don't think anybody would vote on an issue that is going to further marginalize an individual group, so.
Okay. Next question. And I'll try to make sure this isn't as confusing, though it is. Do you believe that transparency is an issue for the city council? If you agree it is an issue, that the city council and the city is not as transparent as it, as it should be, what would you do to address it?
Well, being the council and the mayor, it's not, let me get this straight, it's not a fun job and there's a lot of, you know, difficult decisions. I don't think they have been as transparent as they could be. I think lots of the things they have already, and this is my opinion, it doesn't mean it's right. I think sometimes they have already decided this is what we're going to do before they present it to the public. And I understand some people have put a lot of work into some of those committees, but that doesn't mean you should just follow through when the rest of the, the citizens are strongly opposed to it. And also, when I say that strongly opposed, they may not be, like I say, educated enough to realize, okay, this is, we need to do this for certain reasons. And as far as, well, that's one of the reasons why I'm running for council. You find out things by being involved in it. And I have volunteered for several committees and not been chosen. I think, well, you get in there, you find out what's happening before it's at the end. And so that's, that's my solution. I am running for council to find out and see what we can do about it.
So is lack of transparency an issue for the city and the city council? And if so, what would you do to address it?
Yeah. Short answer, I don't believe it is. Long answer is, when I think of the word transparency, I think of, or not being transparent, I think of like you're being secretive or, you know, I just, and that leads me to think about the ways that we're communicating and the avenues that residents have to learn. And I think the bigger issue for all of us is that none of us have enough hours in our day to dig out this stuff. We just don't. I mean, there's a million things I would wish that I could keep up on. Emails in my inbox that I'm failing to respond to because I'm just too busy. So it's not so much that the city of Manona or the city council is failing to reach out to me or failing to post information to the webpages or to record meetings or to publish the minutes or to provide the Manona Go app or the YouTube channel or, it's not that the city is failing to put the information out there, it's just that I just may not have enough hours in my day to go get it. I guess I would perhaps say to this person, what, what do you propose? What do you propose we do? I'm sure there's more that can be done, absolutely. And in a recent meeting, I supported looking into the hiring of a communications person because there definitely is more than we can do. It will come at a cost. And so just to sort of meet in the middle, like, we put the information out there so that you can come and get the information, that might be the most cost-effective way to do things. But I don't think that the council is acting in secrecy.
Rachel?
I think I need to switch up the order because I feel like I just keep saying I agree with everyone. But I think on, overall, I don't think there's a lack of transparency. Like Teresa mentioned, all the meetings are recorded, the notes are published, everyone has access. If you have, at least, as long as you have internet, you have access, or if you can come to the library, you have access. But the burden really is on both, right? The burden's on the city to provide that information and the burden's on the residents to get the information. So you have to care. You have to make an effort to care and it does take time. It is hard to fit into your day. Along those lines, I do think that there are some larger decisions that will have, you know, large impact on the city that we probably could do a better job of blasting out information. Like Teresa said, it does come at a cost, but I do think there probably is a need for a little bit more push of information rather than the, putting so much burden on the resident to go and find it.
Brian?
Sure. I'll answer this in the sense that I think transparency is the availability of information. And I think that's what people are speaking to. Do we make things available for people to have information, understand what's happening, understand the process? I think we do a wonderful job of making information available. I think that when, when individuals comment regarding, a concern regarding transparency, I think what they mean by awareness. And I think when people feel like they aren't aware of a situation, they feel like it is not a transparent situation. And I'll point to one specific change that the city made over time, and that had to do with our plan commission and notice for a development project. We have for years made information available and have been very, very transparent with how information is available regarding development projects. We made a shift about how is it that we help increase the awareness because that is what helps people feel like information is more transparent. And that was one example of a very simple change, is how is it that we make the physical placement of documents out on a site saying this is a development site, here's the information, here are the meetings, and point people to all of the information that's already available, but how do we increase the awareness? When people feel like they're caught off guard, that's when they feel like they're not being transparent.
Thank you. Patrick?
Thank you. Brian, great answer, just got to say, you know? We have 120-some citizens on boards and committees in Manona that do the bulk of the work on issues before it gets to the council. As council members, we As council members, we kind of follow along with the projects that we're interested in and pay attention to committee work, to kind of have a top-level view of what's going on. But I just wanted to emphasize that most of the work in our city gets done by those 120 citizens that serve on our boards and commissions, and they are normal citizen volunteers, members of our community. And I'm grateful for that. In addition to that, we communicate via WVMO, we communicate via the newsletter, we communicate situations via, you can track specific items or agendas on our website. We publish, we follow all the regulations of open meetings laws, we publish agendas beforehand, physically, usually located at City Hall and the library, in addition to publishing that on the city's calendar online and elsewhere, and, you know, as individual alders, we also try and promote things that are coming up as well. But to mention what Teresa said, there's only so much time in a day, and we also have day jobs as well. So it's, it becomes a little bit, we can always do better, but that's one of the reasons that we talked about that communications director, where maybe we can have an opportunity to condense more complex things into smaller bite-sized pieces that are more easily understandable, which kind of also is an equity issue. So the public information officer type of position is important, I think, moving forward.
I'm smiling because Patrick foreshadowed the next question. And he did not get the questions ahead of time. No one did. And I, Jerry already answered, didn't he?
Yeah, Jerry.
Oh, you did? Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't blame you for asking.
You have a leaky water cup?
I know, I've been trying to avoid it, it's got on my papers, I'm not, I think it's leaking out of the cup. So, the next question is, as an alder, you would be expected to lead or serve on various city committees? What committees interest you, and what would you like to see addressed by that committee? Teresa?
My current committee assignments, I'm really enjoying them, so I've, sustainability for both my first two years, community media, and my mind is just blanking. Tourism, which, I thought, really? Tourism? But that's such a fascinating committee, I just, I love it. And the DEIB implementation committee, landmarks, just, I also served on the public safety committee. I think there was a two-part question here, what would I like to see?
What committees would you like to be on, even though?
Oh, moving forward?
And what?
Sign me up.
What would you like to see addressed by the committee?
Yeah, moving forward, I'd love to learn more. I mean, every committee you serve on, it's like being back in school. It's just, Public Works, how fascinating. I mean, just the amount of stuff that I've learned about how our city wells and aquifers operate, it's, I mean, it is like being back in school. I would love that. I mean, are you taking notes, Mary? Parks, you know, the committees you'd like to assign? Alders are assigned to committees, just for clarification, so you don't really get to pick and choose. The mayor does a fabulous job at figuring out which, where your interests and your skills lie, and then she points as she feels is most appropriate. For me personally, what I'd like to see most, and why I'm running, is I'd really want to see us follow through on DEIB and sustainability, and make sure that we address those in comprehensive planning. There are so many other things I could say, but to make it short, that's what I'd like to see done, yeah.
Rachel?
As I previously mentioned, I did apply to be on several committees earlier, but have not been yet selected.
Which ones?
Some of those have been public safety, public works, parks and rec, sustainability, plan commission, I think those were all the ones I applied to. I really, I really would be open to serving in any committee. I think it's important just to be involved and to be a voice. In my professional life, I help run our events committee, I help run our safety committee, I was on our sustainability committee as well, so I do think I have a lot to offer, and I do find it important to be involved. So I would love, really love to be on any committee going forward. I know there's a ton of issues that need to be addressed with our city, public safety, obviously, the metro route will be a big one coming up, you know, how do we foster our relationship with our police department, who does a great job keeping our city safe? How do we go forward with the public safety building in a way that we can, you know, continue to maintain their facilities and attract good-serving people? But it's hard to limit everything that could be done in 90 seconds, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, I'll take this in, maybe a mixed-up way. As an alderperson, I really see my role on a committee as really being a facilitator of that committee. The citizen volunteers that are there are often the content experts, as well as the staff that serve that committee. And so, many of those committees, I would say there are a couple that I kind of, I'll section off for a second, many of them, the area of expertise really lies in the city staff and the citizen members of why they have been selected and appointed to that committee. And my role is really to help facilitate that agenda, help facilitate and move forward that discussion for that group to be able to make decisions at that level to then move forward to council for a vote. I would say there are a couple committees that I think their appointment to those committees are slightly different in the sense of the chair and co-chair are often very actively involved, and have a different kind of hat that they wear, and might be less about a facilitator. That might be the community development authority, as well as our plan commission. I'd say those are two, and the facilities community, there are a couple other, but I'll just point to those two, that I think there is much more of an active involvement of looking at the areas of interest as a council member, as a member of that committee, in comparison to a facilitator of the committee of other experts.
Patrick?
First, I'd just like to say that I'm very, very excited about the opportunity to be appointed to the mayor's new subway committee, to explore subway transportation in the city of Manona. No, just kidding, that's not actually happening, please don't write anything about that, whoever's listening. No, to, again, everyone here today has really great input, and everyone is super thoughtful, and, you know, Brian mentioned about being a facilitator on the committee, it's kind of the way that I approach some of them, too. It's like on Public Works, we have stormwater expert, we have civil engineer, and, you know, these folks know what they're talking about, and their insight is invaluable. I enjoy Public Works, I had a great opportunity to spend time on the snowplow this past summer, summer, winter, with the one snowstorm that we had, which was pretty great, because, you know, to be able to see the level of detail about how the department works, and the individual pieces, and how they all come together for snow emergencies was pretty fascinating. So, but again, it's experts on the committee that do the bulk of the work, and we guide the conversation, is kind of what we do. I enjoy Public Works, I enjoy personnel and finance, I enjoy personnel and finance, which I'm a member of right now because of my experience having 140 employees, and working on big budgets, and recruiting personnel, and, you know, had an opportunity to recruit our city administrator this past year. So it's, it's one of the ones that I enjoy the most, along with Public Works and Parks. And anything that has to do with housing, which is why I enjoy being on the plan commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
I think, like Rachel said, I did volunteer for several, I think one was the park and recreation, which I think there's probably lots of people want to be on that committee, and it's very hard to get on there, and the police, and police and fire commission. I don't know if there's a development committee, I think that would be interesting to be on. But I, parks and recreation, I think I still am, even at this age, I am still involved in athletics and doing stuff, and I have to agree, I think Jake does a good job, and I think they have improved the park and recreation, what they do for the city. The police and fire commission, I would like to be on that, because I would like to see speeding cut down. The mayor knows, I was almost hit this close, being the crossing guard, luckily I can move fast still. He came 48 miles an hour down from the top of the hill, I was on Maywood and Nichols, and he was at the top, and I saw he was going too fast when he got to Nuestro Mundo, and I yelled, and the student know on this corner to stay there until I say it's safe. Well, luckily I ran, and I hit him with, and I wished I would have had the metal stop sign then, I had the wooden, the, I think it was cardboard, little one, and I hit his truck, and that's how close he came, and I know it was 48 miles an hour, because the students waiting on the corner, Flamingo and Nichols, and the parents, they said he had a cellphone up like this, and it was 48 miles an hour. I mean, and I did, mayor does remember, I did call, because I don't think we've had a pedestrian fatality, and we almost had one. But that's why I would like to be on there, because they speed through my house, coming from east side of Madison to eliminate the East Broadway, and I think, I'd like to see him realize, don't speed in Manona, and also, don't try and do stuff at night, because I'll catch you.
Thank you. All right. Next question. As budgets get tighter for municipalities across the state, budget cuts may need to be made. What cuts would you recommend, and why?
Rachel's first.
So, full transparency, I have not dug into the budget, so I don't feel well-equipped to speak to this, but I do have extensive experience making cuts in my professional life, so we are constantly having to look at our budget every year of, you know, what do we want, what do we need, and what can we cut? And it's a hard decision, and it's never fun, it's always fun to spend money, it's never fun to cut things. So I think I'm well-versed in how to make those decisions, and how to prioritize and push things out that can be pushed out, but I can't speak to any specific examples at this time.
Brian?
Excellent question. I brought the budgets here. I didn't have time to say them, because I went and got coffee. There was a comment that was made when we were reviewing our compensation study, and it had to do with this exact question, and I wholeheartedly agree with the statement that was provided, and it had to do with, we need to compensate our staff fairly, and we need to do it in a way that if we, as a community, do not move forward with an operating referendum, to be able to continue to provide the services that we want and need, we can't just look back to staff and cut staff. That we will have to then look at, what is it that we're providing, and what is it that we're choosing not to provide anymore? And I think that's going to be, have to be done at an individual departmental level, to look at, what is it that they, what are all of the services and programs that they provide, and what are the items that is, that they see as opportunities that are either underutilized, or services that are maybe not going to be provided, but might be a pay-for service? One additional service that we recently talked about is trash and recycling pickup. Right now, it's on the tax rolls. That may end up having to be something that is then shifted as a special assessment outside. How is it wheel tax? That might be an additional revenue source, so that we're going to have to get creative, but ultimately, we'll have to look at departmental level, what programs and services are underutilized, and have them help us propose what is to stop doing.
Thank you. Patrick?
There's a sentiment, when it comes to government out there, amongst certain members of the public, that no matter what we do, we're just spending other people's money irresponsibly. That's a general sentiment. I mean, anytime someone's running for office, it's like, I'm going to get on the council, I'm going to cut and slash the budget, and I'm going to make sense of this, because they're not business people, I'm a business person, I can make this work. Well, the city's not a business, the city's a municipality, it's not designed to make a profit, we can't just increase fees when we're seeing a shortfall, because when we address fees, they have to actually have a cost attributed to them. We can't just say, you know, our building permit is currently $500, we're going to change it to $1,500. It has to reflect actually what the cost of that is. You don't deal with that in private business, because you're pricing things for what the demand will support. You can't do that, we don't have that luxury. We have to be very careful about things that we cut, and how it affects people. We could go to garbage service once a month, but that's not going to make anyone happy at all. This year, with our budget, we received a huge increase, because we used to get a rebate for recycling. Now, none of the garbage companies are offering that rebate anymore, so suddenly, we need to absorb about $140,000 more in our garbage budget. Where does that money come from? We can't just go to the populace and say, hey, Jerry, you're going to give me another $75 for garbage removal on your taxes this year. We can't just do that, it has to go through the budget process. So, it's a holistic thing, we have to look at, Brian mentioned the operating referendum, and in order to stay relevant, and in order to continue providing basic services, that's why we're looking at an operating referendum right now.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, like I say, the three members already have a little advantage, they look at the budgets, and there is a lot the individual taxpayer doesn't understand. I mean, I guess you would look at, what does the least amount of damage, and what is a necessity, and depending what you're going to cut. And there is such a thing, like mentioned, could raise fees, but you have to, can't just raise those up either. I mean, it's a delicate situation, so it's very hard to decide. And like I say, least amount of damage, do we need this, or don't we need this? And you have to decide.
Teresa?
Yeah, when I first heard the question, I sort of thought of it maybe along the lines where Patrick was going to, I think it is perhaps coming from a point of, you know, we just need to cut my taxes, right? And I get it. I'm not a wealthy person. It hurts to get that tax bill, right? But I also know, and I have heard from our new city administrator, that he has even come out and said that this is one of the leanest-running communities he has seen. We are making every penny stretch. If I had, if I were faced with this, you know, to make a decision, I don't, I'm not here to tell other people what to do. I would follow with what our mayor is already doing. Take the question to the leaders of our departments, ask them, where can you cut your own budget by 10, 20, 30%, whatever it might be? Let them decide, they know what they need, they know what they can do without, they know what they can defer to the next year, and that is already happening. It happens every budget cycle. So, there was mention of the referendum, the operating referendum, that's been discussed quite a bit, some possible cuts there if that doesn't pass, maybe we, do we close the library for a couple days? Do we close some parks? Do we close the pool for a few days? I mean, these are real decisions that none of us want to make, none of us want to make those.
Okay, I think we're done with that round. So, next question, Brian starts. How do you feel about Manona's bicycle infrastructure? Is it adequate, or should it be improved?
I think our infrastructure will need continuous improvement as we move forward. I think it continues to grow. We are on a stretch of the lake that is always going to be a bike-friendly haven, and it is, it's by necessity that we'll continue to look at our bike access and infrastructure in thoroughfare, about how is it that we help accommodate bikes, how is it that we help make sure that we have multi modes of transportation on our streets, and how is it that we do it in the most effective and safe way for all of those, both pedestrian, bicycle, cars, and others? If you, there was a number of years ago that we finally did some additional re-signaging of our bike thoroughfare. Many of us would not know where the true lake loop goes, because if anybody bikes through Manona, they actually probably don't follow the true sign-like loop, because it will take you into locations that you will believe that you are lost. So many of us, we have some additional infrastructure that will need to continue to be improved over time. When you look at other surrounding communities, and how they're increasing their infrastructure, we will need to continue to figure out, how do we seamlessly carry that through our community, to make sure that what people are expecting along that whole corridor is matching and seamless and across our community. I see the zero, so I'll stop there.
Patrick?
It's a continuous process, we need to continually make improvements to it. Just last week, at our Public Works meeting, we were talking about addressing some issues on Bridge Road, and the road is very wide, people are, you know, driving in the parking lane to make a right turn, because the road's so wide, it kind of contributes to speeding, it feels like it's a 35 mile an hour road, as opposed to, you know, 25 mile an hour road. So we started talking- So we started talking about improving the bike lane as a possibility, adding sidewalk as a possibility, and, you know, addressing those infrastructure deficits. Also to keep in mind, Manona is, it has areas that, where we could certainly improve bike infrastructure. It makes it incredibly difficult for us because we're out of right-of-way. And what that means is that we can't just take someone's property and then put a bike lane on it, or we can't take that property and incorporate it into the, into the public project. And the only way that you could, we, we can't, we can't condemn that property and take it. We can't do it. So we have to purchase it. And purchasing it is prohibitively expensive, so we have to make good decisions in that regard. And sometimes when we end up with a bike lane that's maybe narrower than we'd like, it's because we have that right-of-way issue that we have to address and be mindful of. So it's a work in progress, and we continue to try to improve it to the best of our ability because I think everyone on the, the current council at this point is definitely appreciative of alternate modes of transportation.
Jerry?
I think Patrick just mentioned the right-of-way there. Um, yeah, it's someone who's just started, I got, I've got another bike out after six years or so. I believe the bike lanes are fairly good, but there's always improvement, and you're limited what you can do with the, the streets are not that wide. I do need, I, to get one of those slow-moving diagonal signs on my back when I ride the bike now because I do not keep a straight line. So I am very aware of the room we have, but there's very limited what you can do. There's always improvement. And the bike, the bike loop I do is up Tony Wata, and I don't think that's the actual loop. But that's a slower era, you have lots of people walking, most people drive respectively. You see them going 20, you don't see too many people going 35, so like I say, there's always improvement.
Teresa?
So what do I think of bicycle infrastructure in Manona? I'm thinking back to when my daughter was young and at that age where the kids would just travel around the neighborhood in these packs of bicycles. It's a wonderful sight. So what makes those kids safe on the bikes would be speeding, you know, enforcing speeding. We've already been working with, our, our police department already is working to address speeding. Traffic enforcement officer is hard at work, and that want, that is an area that he would like to, that our chief would like to increase. There was a bike ped plan that was done a number of years ago, and the city has moved ahead on a number of those recommendations. One intersection that was redone right near my house is the intersection of McKenna, Maywood, and Greenway, where that was made into a much more pedestrian, bicycle-friendly intersection. Sidewalks, sidewalks help. Little kids, when they're learning how to ride their bike, let them go on the sidewalk, right? We need, we need that. Speed bumps, you know, a lot of people get upset about speed bumps, but it helps control traffic and it lets the bicyclists be a little more safe. And something, I think there's just, so many things are all connected, right? So how do we keep our neighborhoods safe to these bicyclists? Maybe, again, with choosing to build dense residential buildings in selective corridors and keeping our neighborhoods quiet. So there's just a lot of pieces to this puzzle that all put together can make pedestrians and bicyclists safer.
Rachel?
One of the reasons we moved back to Manona was just because of the bikeability of it, especially compared to Cottage Grove. So that to say, I think, you know, I love that Manona is part of the lake loop, I love the amount of bicycle traffic we have. So we do have, you know, some areas of good infrastructure, but as always, there can be improvement. But as alluded to, right, it is expensive. I would love to see sidewalks on every street in Manona, but it, it is a huge expense to put in sidewalks and to expand the road to, to put in bike lanes. So I think, you know, we need to just be strategic about where we are improving it, where the highest need is, especially when you think about the bike path in Winnequa and busier roads that have more traffic. But I think, you know, we have a great start, and let's just continuously improve.
Well, we have taken up nearly two hours of, of your time. There are still questions, so I'm so impressed with everybody who submitted all these questions online, a lot of interest in, in this race. But because of time, let us go to closing statements. And as luck would have it, closing statements will be in the same order as opening statements. Patrick, you're first.
Thank you, Joy. And I'd like to thank Will and all the staff with Manona Community Media and everyone here that came out and everyone that's viewing this later. Thank you very much for being part of the process and coming here and listening to the things that we all have to say. I think everyone here today had some, some really great input. That said, experience matters. I'm an entrepreneur that has experience navigating our enterprise through crisis. First through floods, a tragic gas explosion in Sun Prairie, and then the ravages of COVID. No industry has been hit more than the service industry by COVID, and I continue to have to make difficult decisions every day to make sure that our company continues to be successful. And those difficult, those decisions are often difficult and need to weigh much information, and they're not comfortable decisions. I approach my work with city government the same way. Everything that we do is important, and it's especially important now as we're talking about an operating referendum to continue basic services for the city, that we do have people involved on the council that understand the budgetary process and understand what the needs of the city are, and understand how to make sure that we continue to provide the levels of services that people require. That said, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to be here today, and I welcome the opportunity to continue working very hard towards affordable housing issues and, and public safety issues for the city of Manona. Thank you.
I'd like to repeat, thank you, everyone who came, and everyone who suggested questions, and the media for being here and yourself. Growing up in Manona, I have a very vested interest. I care what happens in Manona, and I'd like to see it to continue to be a safe, prosperous place for everyone. And I think I have the qualities to put the work in to be a successful and a good councilman for the Manona. Thank you.
Sometimes you hear the phrase, it's an honor and a privilege, you know, to do XYZ. And I try to search for a more unique phrase, but people use it because it, it's true. It is an honor to serve on city council. It's humbling to have the support of your community and the support of friends and neighbors. It's very heartwarming, and I hope that I've earned your support for, to give this another shot at a second term. The privilege part of it all, yeah, I, I recognize my privilege. I don't have to work two or three jobs. I have, I have the time to put into this work. It does require time. It's, it's not a position that I come to with an axe to grind. I'm not, I'm not here because I'm angry about something or I want to stop something from happening. I don't think something's fundamentally broken or, you know, operating in a way that's out of bounds. I'm here to help and to lend my, lend my support and find ways that I can help move things along. Moving forward, I'd love to continue working toward seeing through some initiatives that I've helped move along in ways of DEIB and sustainability, as well as just the overall goals of, of the community and the council. I've learned a lot about some folks that I hadn't met earlier, and it's really been enjoyable to be here with everyone today, and I hope we work together in the future. And I hope that I can have the support of my community again. Thank you.
Rachel?
So again, thank you, League of Women Voters, and Joy, Will, Manona Community Media. Thank you to everyone who submitted questions. As I said before, I, I think this is very important. I think it's important, a lot of people don't realize the importance of community elections over, you know, the more publicized national elections. So, so thank you for taking the time, especially on a Saturday, for being here or listening or watching when you have time. I, I think it's, you know, I'm fortunate enough to be able to run. I think it's important to get involved in the community. I think I have expertise in my business life, in my previous work, that would bring a new perspective to the council. I also think I bring a new perspective being, you know, a mother of young children. I'm invested in the future of this community. I want to see us grow. I want to see us sustainably grow, and I want to make sure that we continue to attract more people to a community and keep up on the amenities that, that make Manona a great place to live. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Joy, and the League, and Will, and Manona Community, and thank you for everybody that came out today, for all the wonderful questions. And it's been a joy serving on this panel today and an opportunity to learn from, from others and different perspectives, so I, I think it's been helpful. I encourage everybody to come out and vote on April 2nd, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, that concludes this forum for the candidates for Manona City Council. I'll add my thanks to all of the candidates for participating and for serving or wanting to serve. So thank you for, for making that step. Thanks to Manona Community Media for sponsoring and organizing this forum. Residents can view the forum on the Manona Community Media YouTube channel. I'm Joy Cardine with the League of Women Voters of Dane County. Thank you for being a part of this, and please vote on April 2nd.